Welcome to the Milford School Committee meeting of Thursday, November 7th, 2013. The Chairman Robbie Lindsay is away this evening, so I'll be stepping in as an acting Chair. For tonight's meeting is being broadcast through Milford TV and media from the Milford Daily News. The Town Crier, the Patch are all in attendance. If anyone would like to make a video or an audio recording of this meeting, can we transmit this meeting through any medium, please let me know. Thank you. So we'll start off with the agenda calls for the approval of minutes. We're actually gonna ta- we will table that item as we do not have the, a full quorum to be able to vote on that from attendees from the last meeting. So we'll move on to the second agenda item, which would be under announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Does anybody have any announcements? Mr. Chairman?
Just wanted to make an announcement. Can you maybe recall that we started this year a dance program to expand our Fine and Performing Arts Program? I had the chance to pop in on that dance program last, last week with Carrie Bonak, the Principal. And it was their last day of the quarter, and just wanted to just highlight what a great program it was to see it come to life and the number of students as a PE elective that took it. What was great about it was that the, Jody Savastos is the teacher, and she had the students share from their own heritage, their own dances, and they taught each other in this. So it was really, for us, it was like a showcase of all these dances. So we had a boy who's from Russia who taught the class this tango, and the class demonstrated that tango for us, and Jody called me out there to dance with her as well. So I stepped right into it. And we had, but we had another girl who's from Nigeria who showed us this sort of prayer-type dance, this reflective dance that she did, and all the kids, you know, had, over the course of this quarter, had learned these dances. It was just so great to see that the diversity of Milford brought out in the medium of dance, and like the kids are just, they're moving and loving every minute of it. I wanted to just share that back with the committee, because we don't have an opportunity to hear, a chance to hear back from the PE department, sometimes as much as we hear about, you know, art, music, and/or other ELA in science and math. So I wanted to just share that with the committee and with the community, just to see how great that seems to be going.
That's great.
Thanks. Just an update for the committee on that.
Excellent, thank you.
Does that mean you'll be on the next Dancing with the Stars?
You know, I thought about that. We could get the school, we could get the school committee as the guests. We could get you, we could do a little show.
Lord help us.
Jody was very intimidating to dance with, okay? She, she was a back leader. She led me from, you know, from the moves from behind, but she's, it's just, it was a great experience in the class.
Oh, wow.
Kids loved it.
That's great. Thank you. Any other announcements, correspondence? I do have one piece if you guys will bear with me for a moment. You know, just, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that the town of Milford has a very, we obviously have a vote next week that will be coming up that certainly has, plays very heavy into what the future of Milford will look like, and I think I would be remiss if I didn't, as a, as a school committee member and elected official in the town, at least make a comment. It's an important vote, and it's, it's, it's gonna draw a lot of people out, and it will certainly have a significant impact, one way or the other, on the town of Milford. My own personal opinion on that would certainly just be, you know, this has been a very seemingly rushed process. There are, it will have an impact on the schools. It will have an impact on the, on the, on the future of Milford and on the children of Milford. It's, there's a lot of unanswered questions still. The schools are, the schools are already, you know, we're, we're going through some significant changes right now, where we're trying to continue to increase the quality of the schools. And right now with what we're dealing with and with this vote ahead of us, there's not a lot built in for it. There's not a lot that's been built in to be able to help and, and continue to increase the education of the schools of Milford. This will change how our, how our future generations will live in the town of Milford. I've always been very proud to be here, and that will never change. But the town of Milford is, has the potential to, you know, go down a different path, and I'm not sure it's the right one. So I, I ask for, for, as, it's a very important vote. Take your time and certainly make the decision that's right for your family and what you feel is in the best interest of the town and certainly the children of this town. In my opinion, I don't believe that, I, I would be, I would struggle with supporting something of this nature, of this nature, because I personally don't believe that it is. So. Anyone else have any other announcements or correspondence? Christine?
Sorry, I came in as you were talking. But I also want to take the opportunity and this venue to voice my concern about the casino. And I also heard some media attention, news ads run saying how, you know, oh, it would benefit my children. I, I think we should be clear, casinos do not benefit our schools. Any, anything in that casino amendment that helps our schools is to replace what we will lose because of the change in revenues that the town will get. Am I correct, Bob?
Yes, exactly right.
So there's no benefit to our schools. There's no pot of gold at the end of the rainbow. There's no rainbow here. There's a lot of ifs, and there's a lot of unsecured guarantees. And let's also be clear that our town has worked very hard to plan financially for the future of this town. Whether the casino is here or not, our schools are a gem of our town and are provided for. We'll get a new Woodland School, they've planned ahead. Years from now, our finance committee has not planned thinking we're gonna get a casino or worried about that. We've been one of the towns around here that has been so financially sound that we are the envy of other communities. A casino, we don't need a casino to solve any problems, because we don't have problems that the casino can solve. And I just think people need to think carefully about what they're gonna vote for. And I also think, please, get out and vote. This is gonna change our community completely.
Thank you. All right. We will move on. Our next agenda item is the invitation to speak. Is there anybody here that's here for invitation to speak? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on. Our next agenda item is the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent's Certificate of Academic Excellence Recipients and Recognition. Boy, is that a mouthful.
It's a mouthful.
Tony Twister, thanks, I appreciate that. So Bob, you have some, some recognition?
I do. I'd like to call Joya and Peter, if you'd be so kind to come up to the table. You're on the spot a little bit here. I had the opportunity to select four students in, over two different awards for, for Milford Schools, based on the Milford High School's enrollment. There's the Superintendent's Award, and then there's the Worcester County Superintendent's Roundtable. I selected these two students to be the recipients of the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent's Award because of their high GPA, their outstanding work ethic, and all that they do at Milford High School, and over the years has been recognized. So just as, it's a, it's a, it's just a tremendous credit to the both of you for your hard work. I don't know if you wanna say, I do have some certificates to hand off to you as we had to discuss in my office back some time ago. I don't know if you had any comments at all about your experience at Milford High School and how you think that that's readyed you for the world you're about to embark upon? Did you have any, any thoughts? Do you wanna put you on the spot?
I'm on the spot, Mr. Tremblay.
Hey, it's, I expect the best and brightest. I have high expectations.
Okay, keep it coming.
I have high expectations for you.
I don't know. I've, I've loved my experience here at Milford. Thinking about having to leave and not be here anymore in a year is really scary. I think the diversity of Milford has been a huge contributor to my success in being able to meet people from all kinds of different cultures that, like you were talking about earlier. It's been really awesome. I love Milford.
Excellent. Peter, did you wanna?
Yeah, I definitely agree about the diversity. What you mentioned about the dance program, I see it every day in sports, in class, especially on the soccer team, we have a lot of different people. And, I don't know, it's been interesting, it's been a great experience. Yeah, I've had a good time, and it's gonna be, it's gonna be sad to, to leave next year, so.
And you know, what I've seen, and I'm sure you both talked about that, is the way students respect each other's cultural differences in the community. And I've seen that in, whether through sports or through the arts. It's really, it's really what keeps me coming back to work every day, saying, this is just such a great community to be serving, because it's so rich in its diversity, but yet it's so accepting of other, of other cultures. And it's not like that everywhere. It's really not, and it's just, it's so, you have such a richer educational experience because of what you've had to grow up with in this community, so. And you've made us proud. You've made the school committee proud, and it's, it's a distinct honor for me to give you this award among all the students that I could have selected. The two of you are the most deserving for this, in my view. And so, that said, I have a certificate of you, I can, I guess I'll meet you on that side next to Mr. Holland. And I have a certificate for both of you. This is for you and your families for being here tonight. Congratulations to you. I'd love, I'd love the parents and all the work and support you provided to the kids. They wouldn't be where they are here, so, thank you. Super big, appreciate you having me.
Thanks so much.
It's amazing what's happened tonight.
Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you both. There's no obligations remaining for the rest of the meeting, but you're certainly welcome to do this.
Certainly welcome to.
I won't take the awards back.
Thank you, Bob. Moving right on here, we'll move over to the report of the superintendent.
Yes.
Bob, you're staying on, right?
Good thing I showed up.
Half the agenda tonight.
I'm gonna turn over just the update. I didn't, I was not able to be at the, the most recent School Building Committee meeting, the working group that had happened this afternoon. So maybe Kathy, if you don't mind, Kevin and I, I think you guys are both there.
We, today in the working group, we discussed many areas that involved the interior of the schematic design, one of which was the food service in the kitchen. And Carla came, of course, to put her thoughts and wishes into what she would like to see. The other topic that was highly discussed was the security and the safety of the building. And Mr. Tui, as well as Mr. Loughlin, came in to discuss what their opinions and thoughts would be on building that interior schematic design for Milford students. The, many areas were discussed, and a lot of thought was given into the safety of the building. I, I think Kevin could speak to that as well. And the last topic that was discussed was around the traffic control. And Craig, of course, had a lot of insight as building the, the bus loop that he did last year, so he wanted to make sure that he felt as though that plan would move forward and have his insight. And so the meeting was well-served, I think. We did a lot of heavy topics, and it was a good meeting.
The fire chief there?
Both, yeah, both put their insight. Anything I'm missing?
Yeah, I would say there was a lot of detailed discussion around student safety, especially around traffic patterns, and just flow in the building as well.
And what about the, the idea to promote, this came up at the last meeting we had, about getting the word out and making sure people understand. And Ed Thompson and I had a chance to walk through Woodland and did a, a recording there. And just to re, just to, you know, offer this again publicly, that I would be happy to take anybody on a tour, you know, anybody from the, the town meeting or anyone during the daytime, that I could walk you through the building to see some of the overcrowding conditions, because to see it in the evening or see it on a weekend, while you can get some perspective, it doesn't really give you that sense of where instruction's happening in, in those kinds of conditions. Was there any discussion today about how we might promote, actively promote, to get the word out to town meeting members and?
There was, there was discussion around doing Woodland tours at the, was it the pre-hearing of the town meeting?
There were a lot of communication planned that, that was discussed by the group. I think one of the, some of the ideas were to bring members of the community into the Woodland School to kinda see the current conditions, and also talk about what, what the need is, why there's a need for the new building.
Okay.
And invite some of the town registered voters that will be making ultimately the decision, having specific times in small groups, and actually having a one-on-one with them and discussing it through a tour, and, as well as communication, informing the Patch, getting some word out there with the crier, just, just to inform people on what some of the issues are. And, you know, keep that communication going through January. Keep people on top of it.
Well, thanks for that update. The, are there any questions on the Woodland, or, I don't know if Patrick wanted to add anything?
I don't have anything to add to the report. I couldn't attend the working group today, but I don't know if this was mentioned at our last meeting. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend, but I had a conversation with Joe, and he brought up what I thought was an excellent idea, and it's something that I wanted to make sure was spoken about in front of the committee whereby, you know, we have a group of people who are very well-informed about our schools and are invested in the, in our school community, in our PTO organizations. And Joe had suggested it might be a very good idea for committee members to come up with a schedule to reach out to the various PTOs, and that might be a, a very good point for us to sort of begin tours of the buildings and to have opportunity to get those people to see what we see when we walk through that building during the, the school day. Because I think that they are interested enough to want to participate in a tour like that, and, you know, they're also vocal enough to become advocates about it. Obviously, if they care enough about investing time in their local PTO, in their school PTO, I think it's also very likely that they would discuss with their family members and their friends, you know, what they see after a tour of, of that building. And I think outreach is an excellent idea, and I think specifically among the town meeting members. You know, that, that's a list that we can get. And so, you know, I would, I would hope that we have an opportunity to try and educate the town meeting members, you know, what we see on a daily basis and the challenges that we face. And that might be a, you know, particularly important part of the outreach. So I just thought that those two prongs could be particularly fruitful for us in, in spreading the word as to what we see in that building and what we think the future of it is.
Now, I remember last time it was brought up, also the, using, having a video of some sort on the cable.
Yeah, we, we have some renderings of the school. We would have that at Shining Star, at Memorial, Brookside, and at Woodland, so the three elementary.
Has that been done already?
No, I'm, actually I'm working on that with Rob Quinn. I have a meeting with him next week about the installation of those.
Okay.
And I did meet the architects.
The videos.
Yeah, and so I met with the architects already at HMFA in Cambridge to see what kinds of renderings we could put on there and some designs. So we have that already ready to go.
And I'm talking about videos of the Woodland School? Like, as present day?
Of the current condition?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can pull up some video that we've used before.
And I'm wondering if another good perspective might be to have it, child's eye view? So if you have some kids' eye views of what it's like in the school, the crowding, or, that might be a different perspective as well? Because I think that's part of it, right?
That's a great idea.
You know, some of the kids that are shuffled around the small groups, I mean, go, the different learning spaces, I mean.
We could use Milford TV to also broadcast that. So I'll work with Jeremy Folster, who's our video production teacher.
Give the kid a camera.
Yeah, he's. Yeah, we could, we could pull it from that, but I, I like the idea too.
But I think if you give it to the kid a camera, you don't have to, you show their whole thing, but pictures of their day would be, really, show how the learning spaces.
A learning cam.
Do you?
Yeah, it's a great idea.
It would really be, I, I just, I don't know, from experience with one of mine taking a camera, it's amazing what you see, and I just think they could be learning moments for the community, if you see it from the kid's eye view, as well as from our view, because they hear from us.
I'll work that up with Jeremy. Yeah, that's a great suggestion.
Great idea.
I did pull down with some town meeting members, and I, I took a look at the PTO schedule as well. So Patrick, I know you sit on the School Building Committee. Do you guys think we should partner up with them and go out and meet with the individual PTOs? Or do you think that's something we should just run with? Like, what's the best approach there?
Why the question about that? When you said committee members, did you mean the school, for the school committee? Or for the building committee, or for both?
Yeah, I, I think both, but I think, I think we need to be out there advocating very strongly for it, in helping the, the building committee with that process.
My thought process was members of the school committee. You know, I think that certainly members of the, the School Building Committee are, you know, they'd be great as well, but I think that we have a, a certain gravity to our presence, you know, in a PTO meeting. Not that we're particularly important, but just because we listen to what they say, and we care about their opinion, and we respond to some of their direction. And so I think it might be good for us to maybe give, give some information back to them. I think it'd be a good, it'd be good for the school committee members to do that.
And probably councils also, school councils as well.
Absolutely, yeah.
I think it would be a lot easier if we, you know, the idea that Paul had, and I'm trying to think where he broke us all up, and we each had an assigned school. Instead of having all seven schools, if each one of us took a school, you'd have a council and a PTO, but you'd be responsible for that school. You could focus more on, like I had, Woodland was mine. I had Woodland for.
So why don't we do this? Bob, why don't you put, if you can reach out to the presidents of the PTOs?
Yep.
Get some, start to get some dates, and maybe we talk about, maybe we come back with an agenda item in two weeks of, and we make a decision of, do we break up the schools into seven different groups? Talk to the PTOs, see, obviously we gotta talk to them, make sure they're, that they're on board with this idea. And we'll get some things on the schedule for the next.
Sure.
But for the next meeting, put that on?
Yeah, I'll get names, and I'll get names and.
Does that work for you guys?
Name, dates.
Yeah, well then.
Does that work for the, for the, for the rest of the committee?
The nice thing too was that if you had an assigned school, you know, through the year, a couple of times you could pop into your school, give a report on your school, and every member did it. So it's trying to hit all seven schools, and you can't do it, you only have one you focus on. And each committee member reports on that school. It worked out very well.
Great, we'll do, put it in the next agenda.
All right.
Sure.
We also talked about the senior centers. While conducting a presentation there, so I don't know if I can reach out, or if you prefer to reach out, does, does?
Maybe just getting the video first, and then maybe setting, I think that would be great to show it there. You know, we can even bring a screen, we can even do it so they could.
It, it, you know, it'd be nice to at the senior center, if we could find some sort of a social gathering that we'd be welcome at, you know, where we go in and speak to people about it. I think that'd be a good thing too. I think talking to someone face-to-face, you know, about what we see as members of the school committee and what our concerns are, and why we think it's important, I think that has, you know, an impact that maybe maybe might not.
Probably a Wednesday before bingo would be our best part.
Yes, well, that's, well, that's, I mean, someplace where they don't, where they wouldn't mind us coming in, speaking about it, you know.
I mean, seriously, that's Wednesday before.
Oh, I know, I know. I just, I, I think it's funny, your, your, the timing on it was just quite slow. That was great, no. I agree, I think that.
Yeah, I can make the reach to the senior center on that, sure.
Made that contact as well, so.
Yep.
Get some homework tonight.
No problem.
All right.
Happy to do it.
Any other questions on the building school, on the Woodland update? All right.
Uh-huh. Battalion Tourism Management, we had a, a meeting just this past Tuesday with the entire sophomore class to show the idea, just a short eight-minute video about what the industry looks like. We had a great cross-section of panelists there, from students from Johnson and Wales, industry people from Atlas, the President and CEO of Atlas Travel, also the representatives from the Doubletree in Milford. Very well attended. We actually gave out, at the end of that meeting, we gave out, yeah, it was, it was done as a short presentation by a video. Then it was a moderated panel discussion about, you know, why is this, what about this industry? What kind of career opportunities are there? Following that was about 20-minute Q and A with the students. They could ask questions that they wanted of the panelists. It went very well. We handed out cards afterwards that said, you know, I'm interested in this, and we asked for their parents, their, their student's name, student's email address, and the parent's email address. We then followed up, and I actually, I'll take an alert now, message went out tonight, speaking with Carrie today, to the entire sophomore class as well. Did you get a message on that as a reminder? We had 78 students complete cards of expressing an interest in wanting to learn more about the program. So on Tuesday, November 12th, this coming Tuesday, we have a parent information in the evening at 7:00 PM in the auditorium, and that will be a chance for parents to ask specific programming questions about how the curriculum would look, what the two-year commitment's all about, the application process, and so forth. So it's looking very positive. Again, we're looking for, we're really looking for 20. So 78 is a great start, and as people express the interest, whether or not they express the interest on Tuesday, it would be nice to have a working list of about 40 students, so we could have a waitlist, and then, and then ultimately accept 20 students into the program. So we're well on our way, and I've made a reach also with post-secondary schools, you know, Mass Bank, Quincyman, to create those, to now begin work on creating the dual-course enrollment, so they can actually start getting college credit in their senior year as well for these programs. So we're well underway with that, and I'll certainly let you know more after next Tuesday's presentation. If you have the opportunity to join us, again, it's at 7 o'clock in the auditorium.
Thank you.
And then finally, item C is the National Principal Appreciation Month. I put this out to, to families, and I actually pushed it out through the school secretaries around the principals to surprise them with National School Principals Month, which I didn't realize is the month of October. But I had a great collection of responses. I have them on the board behind me, so National Principal Appreciation Month. And some great illustrations of actually, of Mr. Kincaid. I like the one that was using, dressed as, it's like a Superman, which is, which is great, so.
Super C, I think is actually what it's on. There's a C on the front, so super C.
Right, and Mr. Kincaid as well was, was nominated. Most all of our principals were. We have, not everybody sent up, you know, artwork like this. So we do have some of those. I wanted to just share a couple of, a couple of things with you.
He's our only male principal though, right?
He, he is now, yeah.
Yeah.
That's right, yeah. So this one, Jim, Mr. Kincaid, I won't read all of these, but you seem to have a good collection of, of feedback. This is pretty funny though, and Craig doesn't know I'm doing this tonight, so this is, this is great.
Oh, he's thrilled by the choice.
So, so this student says, you're the, you're the best principal in the world. Thank you for letting us in your school. But that was great. And thank you for Jim and Art. We appreciate that. Thank you for the playground. You know, I like this one. Thank you for making Woodland School. I like Woodland School because it makes me learn math a lot. I like the school a lot because we can have climbers, you know?
Oh, wow.
It's just, and these, they're just really great, heartwarming collections for the principals. They're gonna love to read that. And then, you know, we had a contribution from the Milford Brownie Girl Trips 11276, ones that recognized Mrs. Kincaid during this month for all of her work with the bullying prevention project at the school. So we have a lot of illustrations about that up here. I had a number of, for the high school principal. Carrie Bonak is my principal, and she's awesome. No matter how much she has on her plate, she's always checking on her staff to see if there's anything we need or to ask about how things are going. Her work ethic, organizational skills, and composure inspire me every day. This is from staff members. So this kind of feedback, just a sampling of that, it was just great to read, and I'm sure the principals will be delighted to read it themselves, to hear what people think of them. So I wanted to just share that publicly and take an opportunity to recognize the hard work that our principals do. We often recognize the work our teachers do, and certainly our parents, but our principals are right there too, and they're, they're the ones held accountable at the end of the day, for good or the bad. And I think it's just, wanted to have an opportunity to say thank you to those principals publicly.
That's great. Very nice. Great. Move on to the report of the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Human Resources.
I have four warrants this evening for the committee's approval. The first warrant is in the amount of $29,878.2.
Take a motion from Mike, second from Joe. All in favor? Opposed?
The second warrant is in the amount of $232,750.62.
Motion from Patrick, second from Christine. All in favor? Opposed? All in favor? Unanimous?
The third warrant is in the amount of $23,422.50.
Take a motion from Mike, second from Christine. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
And the last warrant is in the amount of $199,684.56.
Okay, take a motion from Christine, second from Patrick. All in favor? It's unanimous, well, that one passes as well.
The committee has a list of the latest appointments from our previous meeting. No vote is required. I do require a vote for a jury duty for Mr. Brian Edwards for November 12th.
Of course. Take a motion from Joe, second from Mike. All in favor? Motion passes.
I also have a request for the school committee for course reimbursement in the amount of $15,681.13.
And that requires a vote as well?
It does.
Take a motion from Christine, second from Joe. All in favor? All right, passes.
I have a request this evening that does require a vote for out-of-state travel. It is the annual Washington DC trip for the eighth graders, and that is from May 27th to May 31st. And as well, there will be Heritage Week activities for the students that do not attend the DC trip. It does require a vote.
Okay.
Can you check the date? I think it's.
It is the 27th.
Yeah, May 27th says May 3rd. Can that just be corrected? On the sheet that's in our packet? Yeah.
It says 27th through the 3rd.
It's May 3rd.
I, oh, I'm sorry.
On the very first sheet, the request for field trip.
It's a time travel trip, actually.
All done and over.
I, I believe it's to the, um, geez.
It, it's Tuesday to the Fri- to a Friday, so.
Okay.
I, I think the committee's comfortable so long as the date's gonna be corrected.
I just wanted to make sure that's corrected.
Just make sure that date's correct, the date is correct on the paperwork that's gone home, cause I signed it and filled it out yesterday, so I do know that, but.
Can I have a question too, um, I'd like to know numbers of students attending, um, how many sign up? Then how many actually go and how many are back for Heritage Week? It, you know, it's a, it's a big financial commitment and, um.
On the part of parents.
Yeah, I have some concerns, um, so I just want the numbers.
Okay, sure.
I know it's a tradition, but doesn't hurt to ask.
I can get some history too, Christine, a couple of years prior, cause Connie's been with us, she can give that to us.
Yeah, I'm just curious. That would be great. Right, that would be great, cause I'd like to see the trajectory.
Does require a vote?
Any other, any other questions or concerns? Alright, take a motion from Mike, second from Pat, and all in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Enjoy. We'll move on to the report of the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. The king of the PowerPoints.
So I just wanted to update the committee on, um, Park and where the state was, this, these are, these are slides directly from the, uh, Massachusetts Department of Education. Um, Park is the, um, test that, um, we're moving in the direction of potentially replacing MCAST in a couple of years, I just want to walk you through the timeline. Uh, Milford is one of the eighty-five percent of districts in the state of Massachusetts that will be piloting tests, and I'll share with you where those pilots will be taking place as well. Um, I just want, I just wanted to share this slide with you, it just gives you kind of a frame of reference in terms of the curriculum frameworks and when they've been updated, if you notice, um, foreign language, art, health, um, and social science are all over ten years old. The, um, the science curriculum frameworks for Massachusetts, um, are in process and will be updated, I believe during the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year is kind of the, um, the intended year of adoption.
Why did it take so long?
It's, it's a huge political process, um, social studies and history in particular is a real hot potato.
Okay.
So the, um, the students of Massachusetts may never learn of the Clinton and second Bush, or, I'm sorry, the Bush administration and the Obama administration at this point.
It's crazy.
Yeah, um, it's, it's, it's a long, long process though to, to actually adopt changes. Um, the English and mathematics have just recently been updated in two thousand ten. Um, and we're, we're in the process of kind of making that shift to the Common Core, um, state standard, which those frameworks reflect. So the Common Core state standards is a, is a transition to new, more rigorous, um, standards. And again, ELA, literacy and mathematics, uh, I'm gonna talk about what those big shifts are, the one, one really big shift with ELA and literacy is every teacher now is responsible for, um, literacy. Whereas before you were kind of responsible for your own area, especially at the secondary level, now the expectation is that every teacher is responsible for reading and writing across the board, and that's one of the really big shifts with, with the Common Core. So, uh, last year was the introduction of the two thousand ten standards, and our MCAST analysis reflects how we did compared to those standards as, as well as how we did just generally, and we're really looking at how we're doing compared to those new two thousand ten standards because that's what we're gonna be held to next school year. Again, two thousand thirteen, near full implementation of the two thousand ten standards, and in fourteen, it's a complete implementation. Key shifts in ELA and literacy, there's equal emphasis now on literary and informational texts. Um, this is causing some controversy on the national stage because, um, some educational theorists believe it's a push away from literature and literacy when really it's, the, the, the real goal is it's a reflection of what the expectations are in college and the workforce. The vast majority of texts that, um, you know, you're expected to read as an adult tend to be informational texts. Reading, writing and speaking grounded in evidence from text, writing in response to one or more texts. So students for the Park exam will be asked to pull, to synthesize information from multiple sources as one of the activities they're gonna be assessed on. Uh, regular practice reading complex texts in academic language. Key shifts in mathematics, one of the criticisms of the, um, the international criticisms of the US math curriculum is that it's, it's a mile wide and an inch deep, and the goal with the new Common Core standards is to really try to focus what's happening at each grade level and go into a little more depth. Goal is to have a conceptual understanding of the topic, students are expected to extend their knowledge to real-life modeling and application, that's really the key, is the modeling and application piece, and a lot of the assessments that they're going to be expected to complete on the Park exam are gonna be application-type assessments, where they're gonna take a concept and actually apply it to a problem. Uh, why do we need a new assessment, uh, because, basically because of the shift to the Common Core state standards, we're shifting from the old standards to the new standards, and whether we shifted with a consortium like Park, we, we're gonna either have MCAST plus or, or a new exam. And again, why now, it, it's, it's part of the, it's part of the race to the top process, is, is what's driving the timeline at the state level and the federal level. And again, the focus is on grade level and course-specific standards leading to college and career readiness, and that's really the goal of the, the Park process. And again, for ELA, it's literary analysis, narrative writing, research simulations for math, it's real-life modeling and applications. And, um, this spring, and we're gonna be part of this field test, fifteen percent of Massachusetts students in grades three through eleven are going to be randomly, or have been randomly selected in terms of the grade level in the schools. We're going to receive, um, direction from the Department of Education, how we're actually gonna pick which classrooms among the, um, piloted grade levels that have been identified, we're actually, at this point, only piloting the ELA tests this year. There's a second and third round of the pilot process, so we may add a classroom or a grade level if the state identifies one of our classrooms or one of our schools.
Kevin, just a quick question I have on that.
Sure.
I realize that by design we are not teaching to a test, however, different test-taking tactics are, may be in play here. Whereas there's gonna be some students that are gonna be measured on a different type of test. Is there, is there any concern or thought that's been given to, when we select different test groups, they're gonna be piloting this? Is it a different, is it different format from a test-taking perspective, are they open response, I know that's created a lot of issues for students in the past?
So, there is a completely different format for our, and I'm gonna get to that slide in a second, I think, I believe it's our ninth graders are gonna take an online version of the test.
Okay.
So which will be a very different way of kind of the, the state standardized testing than we've ever, we've ever done before. One of our points of emphasis as a district this year is really looking at how our curriculum is lining up to the Common Core standards, so we're looking at building more writing into the curriculum, building more of those, kind of synthesizing from multiple sources, pulling evidence from texts, um, making the math, um, exercises that we're doing kind of fall into that, are, are they able to apply it, are they able to conceptualize it? Are they able to answer those how and why questions?
Okay.
So we're doing that kind of work, um, the piece with the Park is, we're not ever gonna see the results of the, the field test disaggregated for Milford students. We're probably gonna see a report from the state saying, this is our, um, these are our takeaways based on the field test for all the students in Massachusetts.
So will those students take Park in addition to MCAST?
This year, yes.
Okay, that's, that was my question, this is, are they taking two different tests?
How that'll work is if you look at the windows, the test windows which are on this slide, March twenty-fourth through April eleventh and May fifth through June sixth are times that correspond post-MCAST exam, so take the MCAST first and then a subset of, of, of different grade levels will take, it's a couple of classrooms per grade level where, where we're identified. They'll take the, they'll take the Park exam, um, the field test.
Okay, I'm, I'm interested.
How, how much, how much time is this, I'm sorry, while you're on that, how much time is about taking the.
I, 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 let me pull that up, let me pull that up, it's, it's actually the next slide.
Cause I.
Yeah, you certainly understand. And pulling students out of class after June sixth, I mean, a lot of our subject matters are winding down at that point, but we're still in the heat of the educational season, so to speak, in the twelfth of April.
So these are, these are our pilot, um, these are our pilot schools and grade levels, so Woodland three and four, Stacy six, seven, and seven, East grade eight, um, Milford High School grade nine, and if you look at the last column in the table, that tells you the number of the sessions, and I believe the sessions are either forty-five or sixty minutes depending on the grade level, so the equivalent of probably three class periods or two class periods depending on, depending on the, um, administration and the grade level.
Okay.
So, if you look at the number of classes, for each grade level you're talking mostly two classes, for the high school it'd be three classes.
So, Doctor, my question, I'm sorry, I'm gonna stop.
No, 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 no.
You use terminology, this is a shift from MCAST. So my question is, has MCAST done what we needed it to do?
Well, and there's, there's a debate happening at the state level right now, it's a great question, there's a, there's a debate happening at the state level, absolutely.
Political.
Um, is, people feel, people have felt pretty good about MCAST in terms of the information that it's giving us and the data and the analysis that we're able to do based on the, the test results. Um, and so there's some talk at the Board of Education level of why are we throwing out this program that's been pretty effective and is seen as a model from a national perspective and moving, and moving in a, in a different direction. Um, and that's part of the reason why they're doing the field testing, and next year, districts will have the option, let me pull ahead to that slide too. Okay, so here we go, um, next year, two thousand fourteen, fifteen, districts will have the option to either do MCAST or Park. You can't kind of split it up, you have to say, jeez, we're gonna be an MCAST district or a Park district. Um, and the state's gonna take all this information and, and ultimately make a decision. Um, we're gonna hold out judgment as a district in terms of which direction we're gonna go in until we get a little more information, ob- there's some obvious advantages about going to Park in a year where it's kind of a, a, again, a second pilot year, but it'd be a full pilot because you get, you know, a first crack at the test as opposed to doing another year of MCAST, if they're going in the Park direction. If they're leaning in an MCAST direction, it wouldn't make any sense to do Park.
Okay.
And I think we're gonna try to get a sense, and, and I've, I've gone to a number of meetings, um, help of, you know, district-level administrators across the state where the state's wrestling with these kinds of issues about, you know, which direction do we really wanna go in, there's a lot of investment from Massachusetts, Mitchell Chester is the, um, the, the, the chair, it's, I think it's an eighteen or nineteen state consortium, Park, there's another consortium of about twenty states called Smarter Balance, and these are kind of the two big testing groups.
So, are you pleased with what you see?
Uh, you know, I think it's moving in a good direction in terms of what it's asking students to do, and I think it's gonna raise the level of what we're doing in classrooms, which I think is always a good thing, I think we're, we're, through, through the new Common Core state standards and what's being asked on the, um, on the Park exam, I think we're being asked to increase our expectations of students, in, in all students, to be able to actually take information, whether it's in ELA, math, um, science or not, science is gonna be MCAST for the foreseeable future, right now. But the fact that the ELA piece, the literacy piece is pulling articles, like if you're taking the ELA test, you're not just reading fiction, um, you're, you might read an article about science, you might read a, a historical piece, you might have like a, a primary source document, and you're gonna be, depending on the grade level, ask questions to pull information from that, tho- those texts and, and kind of build an argument. So it's going beyond kind of the open response, which to your points got, students have struggled with, but if we're increasing kind of how we're teaching critical thinking skills and practicing critical thinking skills and developing the ability to kind of look at a ta- look at a complex text, pull information, apply that information, I think educationally students will be more prepared for that test, I think there's gonna be some growing pains. Um, one of the discussions they had was, you know, in Massachusetts we tend to be one or two, um, nationally, and we're usually top five or six internationally depending on the assessment, if you take Massachusetts out as a, as a state comparing it to other countries. Um, and we don't wanna be, I think it'd be foolhardy to think that we're just gonna be better than everybody else without m- making any changes ourself. But the converse argument to that is, our needs improvement tends to be a lot of states proficient in terms of their standards, it just kind of works out that way. So I think we're gonna be, we're gonna struggle, but we're probably gonna struggle a little less than other states when we kind of, uh, you know, when we're, when we're held to this new kind of rigorous standard through the Common Core and through the Park exam. Or if we do stick with MCAST, it's not gonna be MCAST as we know it, it'll be MCAST plus, if that makes sense.
So this will be, what it sounds like too, is, from what I've read as well as what you're talking about is, is it's gonna ultimately go to more of a nationalized test rather than a state-specific, because it's, it, my understanding is that that's sort of the directionally where we're headed because, to your point, our needs improvement, so, and by definition, some of our stru- more struggling both scores as well as schools, school districts in, in general, maybe the top performing schools if you put them in forty-seven other states.
Potentially, yeah, potentially, yeah.
Potentially, so, i- it's, my understanding is that the goal was to sort of not bring us down or bring the top, bring the top performing states down, but it was to kind of bring the rest of the country up to the certain, to the kind of the higher level standards, we're very fortunate that we live in a, in a state as well as in a district where we're sort of the top of the food chain, as I realized.
A- a- absolutely, I think that's, I think that's a good way of looking at it, um. N- next meeting I'll bring an article and just share it with the committee, I won't present on it, but there was a great article in Education Week about where Massachusetts stood on the, the NAEP and the TIMS, and how in the United States, there's a big gap between thirty-seven states out of the fifty were above the international average in mathematics and science on both exams. Um, but there's a huge gap between the haves and the have-nots in the United States, and those, I think, it's, it was either thirteen or fifteen states, and I'd have to pull the article up, that were below that international average, so when we see the Park exam, the results will eventually be, when we see MCAST, we see school, district, state, we're gonna see school, district, state, Park Consortium, so you're gonna be able to compare your scores to these eighteen or nineteen other states. The state of Massachusetts, if you're in elementary school, the district, and compare your scores to the school score, so you, there'll be, there'll be multiple levels of analysis to do. But I think it's gonna be a step up for everybody, and that's something that I think as a state and as a district, we're starting to prepare for, and we're really looking critically at how are we making that crosswalk from the old standards to the two thousand and ten standards that reflect the, um, Common Core state standards.
I, can I, I just wanna say one thing though, as a teacher in the classroom, this has to make you go crazy. That you just can't pick a lane and drive, it seems like the education is like, all the bigwigs are changing the map. And so it's gotta be really hard for that person in the classroom every day to, now this year, okay, now we're gonna get ready for Park. I, I just find it, and, and I like this dialogue, I mean, I, as a, personally, I, but as an educator, when you're just trying to teach the kids, y- you know, for years, all we've been talking about is MCAST, and for years it's been, how do we make, how do we get the information from MCAST? And how do we teach our kids so they're getting the most and they're delivering the curriculums, and now it's Park, like, it, it's, I, I find, I, if I were a teacher, I would just be like.
I'd be curious to see what the, cause I, I, I can certainly see this, see the same thing. But I'd be curious to see in talking with, uh, in hearing from the teachers.
Right.
It doesn't, is, is it a sense of relief, or is it a sense of like, to your point, pick a lane and drive? Cause I know that MCAST has certainly added a, a different level of stress over the years to the educational process of, it's almost become about, yes, it's about teaching the subject, and our teachers have always done a phenomenal job of doing that, but it's also a piece of, I've not only gotta teach you the subject, but the added level of difficulty of, I have to teach you how to take the test, which is its own level of complexity, which I know firsthand through everything from, obviously talking with teachers, not the least of which sometimes I don't have to reach much outside the four walls of my house for. And I know my, other members are in the same boat, I wonder if there will be that sort of stress relief of, maybe this is just different, or it's, well, well, now what's, what's next? So it'd be interesting to see what the teacher feedback is.
I, I appreciate our administration's enthusiasm in moving towards this, this new standard, I, I certainly do. And based upon the trajectory that I've seen this administration moving in over the past year, there's no doubt that our students are gonna be as qualified as any student to take this test. My concern, as it has been, um, what the MCAST test was, anytime the legislature gets involved in deciding what our educational status is gonna be, there's gonna be difficulties in implementing, and there's gonna be gaps between what the students are taught and what the test is testing them on, and it's something that we're gonna have to struggle with, unfortunately it's not going away. Uh, I didn't like the MCAST, I, I, I don't like the form of them, um, and I don't have problems with high-stakes testing. You know, there's lots of countries that do high-stakes testing, and, you know, and, and in England you can't move on to the next grade until you pass, uh, I think they call it the King's Exams, or I, I forget what it's called, but, so I don't have a problem with high-stakes testing, I just, I worry about whenever the legislature gets involved. I appreciate the enthusiasm, and I know that we're gonna position our students to do well. Uh, I'm, I'm just curious to see if, if this is gonna be any better than it has been in the past.
Right.
We are walking a number of teachers, uh, off of the ledge.
Right, I would imagine.
We are, i- in fact, the superintendents, uh, and as Kevin well knows too, we've, we've begun to push back, uh, actually against the commissioner.
Just think of.
It's too much, too, too quickly. Uh, coupled with this, the, 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 the movement toward Common Core.
Right.
The, uh, the Park assessment, on top of the, all the ESL, the retail SEI endorsement courses that are now required for re-licensure, on top of that, the educator evaluation tool, and that's still even continuing to roll out, we, wait till we roll out the, uh, the parent feedback element of that, it gives teachers, whether or not they continue to work based on the feedback they get from students and parents, I mean, the, the, sadly, we've only begun the, uh, the changes, that we're, that we're obligated to, they're not even, and I try to reinforce that to Milford teachers to thank them and reassure them and, and help them along every step of the way, and I see the association has walked in the room as well, and Bill, I think you would be the first to attest that I've reached out to the association on all these matters that are being pushed from the state, and enough is enough, we, we, we stand united on this, and we will be compliant. But we're not gonna do it without a little bit of, of a pushback to say, hey, give us a chance to digest one thing.
I guess that's my point, right.
Before we take another thing on our plate, there's just not enough time, and, and then all the professional development you'd need to build in that we have time that we don't have to, to train our staff so they're not, but you're starting to see mass exodus of staff, uh, not so much in Milford, but around the state. People who are eligible for retirement are, are, are taking that on, principals, superintendents everywhere, they're just saying, enough is enough, and it's a, uh, when I tell you that three hundred superintendents, they're, they're all like going to the State House for, for, uh, for these kinds of, um, presentations and just voicing their concern.
Well, that's the, that's the political process, you know, we haven't had a government change, but the, you know, the Secretary of Education changes and the whole philosophy changes, and, you know.
Yeah, it is. That's right.
And, and they're having that same debate from the, the state to the federal government perspective too, because the, the commissioner recently, at, at an event that I actually attended this week, um, was talking about how, you know, he's had to give a lot of pushback to the, to the federal government on expectations that they have for the state level, and so everybody feels like they're kind of caught in the middle of this thing.
And what we're doing, I, I'll tell you, not to, to. And what we're doing, I, I'll tell you, not to, to extend this presentation longer, but what we're doing is by getting ourselves into classrooms and keeping it, ourselves really close to the teachers. That would be well-served for our commissioner and, and, and the political people up in Malden to do, because the more removed you get from the classroom, the easier it is to make these decisions in a, in a, in a think tank. That, not, without realizing the day-to-day impact, and I've actually been very vocal with the commissioner myself, saying, what you're failing to realize is the impact that you have on negotiations in a community and good faith relationships that you're trying to build, and that's missing. So, there's a, a lot of problems, but Kevin and I assure you, and the principals are working as gently as we can to roll this out in a way that doesn't compromise our, our kids and what's happening in classes as best we are, as we can.
And saving the sanity of as many teachers along the way is critical.
Without a doubt.
So, I just wanna head on, just a couple of quick pieces, just so the information is out there. So, for two thousand fifteen, Milford will have to make a determination whether we're gonna go to PARC or MCAS, but we have to make that, we have to go all in. We have to either go all in on PARC or all in on MCAS. And, and at this point, we're not ready to even make that determination, because we don't have enough information. PARC will offer computer-based and paper and pencil tests. Most districts in the Commonwealth don't have the infrastructure to administer full-scale, computer-based testing for all the students, kind of, it, it just isn't there right now. And I think the states and the federal government are exploring ways to kind of build that capacity kind of long-term. Kind of talked about this one. This, this is a key piece, at least for the class of two thousand eighteen, and this is for parents and guardians of students who are either in high school or heading into high school. Through the class of two thousand eighteen, MCAS at the high school level will still be the competency determination for graduation. So, for ELA, math, and science, through at least two thousand eighteen, MCAS will be the determining factor, not the PARC exam. So, at least at the high school level. Even if we go with PARC next year, so we, so I kind of lied when I said we're gonna go all in. At the high school level through two thousand eighteen, MCAS will still be the competency determination. That's based on fairness, because the students who are either entering the high school or in the high school now wouldn't have had the opportunity to take a few PARC tests to prepare for, for this graduation requirement.
The, the only last piece I would just add, thank you. The only last piece I would just say is, on this, when they talk about the infrastructure from a technology perspective. We seem to, and, and not we, being the, being Milford, but at, at a federal and in many cases at a state level, they're really big fans of unfunded mandates. And that would be a substantial burden on most communities.
Yeah, and that's part of the reason why they have the paper and pencil option. Initially, everybody was gonna take the PARC test online as of next year, and they just, I think they realized that it is not realistic.
Kids can do it, but...
Well, we just don't have the, the computers in schools ready to go, or the technology ready to go. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, nice job. Nice job, David. Gonna call that the hot seat.
The, moving on to any new business? Any old business? Does it, do you have to formally nominate Patrick and, and I for the Self-Evaluation Committee?
Oh, did you hear about this?
By the way.
I would have to accept the appointment, whatever... Subcommittee Joe wants me to be on, so I'm, I'm happy to do it.
I don't know if that requires a vote. I think it's just an appointment of the chairman. So, I will, I will, I have no problem with it, but I, I will leave that for Robbie. How about we table that for the next meeting, and I'll let that for the... You wanna do it? Joe, are you, is it something you're interested in doing?
Absolutely.
Patrick?
Absolutely.
Does anybody have any concerns or questions?
Nope.
Then I, I think it's, I think it's fair to say that, you know, you, we appoint you guys as the, as the, as the guardians of that, so to speak, as a subset.
Sounds good.
Alright, sounds great.
So then, that being said, at this point, I move that we move into executive session. We do have an executive session this evening that does complete our, our formalized public agenda. I move that we move into executive session to hear agreements from the Milford Teachers Association, and we will not return.
Roll call.
It does require a roll call to move into executive session.
Yes.
Joe? Michael?
Yes.
Uh, no, I will not be here, so...
Yes, me? And that being said, thank you.